I would like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's 3:00. And the first thing we'd like to do is announcement. I'd like to say at our last session, the 2:00 session, we had the Prescott area youth, young professionals were here. And just so thankful that we have them in our city and the suggestions that they made to us. So just wanted to make that announcement. So we will start by invocation, and that is by Pastor Charlie Perkins with the Prescott Presbyterian Church. And we will follow that with Councilman Blair leading us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you that you have given to us a governing and overseeing of all things. And we thank you that in that governing, that you have blessed us with civil government for the good of your people in countries and cities and counties throughout the world. And we pray, Lord, in thankfulness for this city council here in Prescott, and we ask that you would give them great understanding of the things before them and more wisdom as they work together in these things. We thank you for the grace of a multitude of counselors. And we pray, Lord, that all the things they do here today would be for the good of the citizens of Prescott. We pray for these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Perkins. So we want to have a roll call.
Mayor Mangarelli is excused. Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
Six are present.
Thank you, Maureen. Do we have any items being pulled from the consent?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Could I please have a motion for the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move to approve consent agenda items 6A through 6I.
Second.
And please vote.
I'll try it again.
Passes 6-0.
Do you want me to take the no off of? I think I did that. Okay, we'll see. All righty, very good. So now we will move on to the ordinances and consent. Go ahead, Maureen.
Item 7A, adopt ordinance number 2018-1607, authorizing the abandonment of Right Away and reserving an easement for public utilities across the entire area of abandonment to DW1 Investments LLC and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said abandonment. Item B, adopt ordinance number 2018-1622, authorizing the purchase of easements from Robert H. Kekeheffer, 1978 revocable trust, William and Sylvia Neely Trust, Knight Tech LLC, Jean Owen, Nancy Church, Carl and Jill Wagner, Jeannie McCall, and Edward Marmon, and Lori Knudsen, and authorizing the purchase of Right Away from Knight Tech LLC and Jean Owen for the Coronado Avenue Safe Route to School SF 029 project, and authorizing the mayor and staff to execute any and all documents to effectuate said purchases.
Thank you. Any comments from council? Could I have a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt ordinance numbers 2018-1607 and 2018-1622.
Please vote. Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Now we'll move on to the liquor license agenda. New licenses.
Mayor Protem and council, there are three new liquor licenses. The first one is for a public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for El Charro Norte located at 120 North Montezuma Street. The application has been posted for the 20 days and no comments have been received.
Any comments from council? From the public? Could we have a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 21493 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for El Charro Norte 120 North Montezuma Street.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
So now item number two. Thank you, Maureen.
This is a public hearing and consideration for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Carmella's located at 156 South Montezuma Street, Suite C. Their application has been posted for the 20 days and no public comments have been received. And I'm not sure if the applicant is here or not from Carmella's. Oh, yes, he is here.
Good. Would you like to come up and tell us about your business?
Sure, it is.
Are you Mark?
Yes, I'm Mark.
Nice to meet you.
Sorry. Yeah, it should be a breakfast and lunch with an Italian deli type, just serving beer and wine. We'll cater as well.
Nice.
What else you need.
Well, no, well, thank you for your business in Prescott.
Other than it's spelled wrong, there should be one L in Carmella's.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for letting me know that.
Good to know. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any comments from council? Can we have a motion?
Mayor, I move to, or Mayor Protem, excuse me, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
I move to approve liquor license application number 21494 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Carmella's with one L, 156 South Montezuma Street, Suite C.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. And we have one more?
Yes.
Thank you, Maureen.
Third liquor license is for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Atmosphere located at 232 South Montezuma Street. The application has been posted for the 20 days and no public comments have been received. And I believe the applicant is here. Yes.
Yes, would you like to come up? Thank you. I like the way you spell this. Very interesting.
In the dictionary, it's the phonetic pronunciation for A-T-M-O-S-P-H-E-R-E.
Nice. Put the mic low. There you go. Thank you.
We're a very tiny restaurant. We have six tables. We do basically farm-to-table, very simple food, just prepared very, very well. A lot of people think that we're fine dining. We've been open for more than a year. People think we're fine dining because we don't serve sandwiches and hamburgers. We just serve very simple food, prepared very, very well.
Very nice. Thank you.
And I have literature. Can I?
I'm sorry?
I have literature here, some things.
Sure.
You can give it to a deputy there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we have a motion, please?
Mayor Protem, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license application number 23054 for a new Series 12 restaurant liquor license for Atmosphere, 232 South Montezuma Street.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
So now we'll move on to special events. We have quite a few.
Mayor Protem and council, we have six special events. The first one is for the Boys and Girls Club of Central Arizona for the Monsoon Festival Event. It will take place on Saturday, August 18th. The second one is for the Prescott Vet Set Charitable Foundation, the event's Prescott All Corvette Show on September 21st. The third one is Prescott Sunrise Lions Club for Family Fun Day on September 29th. The next one is for Arizona Wildfire and Incident Management Academy for CrossFit, Captain CrossFit Hot Shot Workout for August 24th and 25th. The next one is St. Luke's Episcopal Church for Cabaret 2018, All You Need Is Love, and that will take place on September 9th. And the last one is for the Charlotte Hall Historical Society of Arizona for the Charlotte Wine Fest, which will take place on August 18th.
Welcome to Prescott in the summer, right? A lot of events. Could I please have a motion? Well, first, any comments? Okay, a motion, please.
I move to forward special event liquor license applications, B1 through B6, to the Arizona State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the regular agenda and item A, approval of Accurtrust Board Grants for Fiscal Year 2019. Mr. Baines, how are you?
Good, thank you, Mayor Protem, council. In 1959, the Accurtrust Board was established through a court adjudication of Mr. J.S. Acker's will, in which he left the majority of his estate to the city of Prescott primarily for music and parks, especially music for children. Every year, organizations apply for the Accurtrust Funds through a grant process. These organizations must be incorporated, provide a financial statement, and must appear before the board for a five-minute presentation. The Accurboard received a request in the amount of $22,433 this year. The board met, reviewed the applications, and voted to recommend the following for approval: the Chaparral Arts at $2,000, the High Mountain Chordsmen at $2,000, the Prescott Pop Symphony at $3,000, the Yabai College Foundation at $2,500, and the Yabai Symphony Association at $3,000, for a total of $12,500. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions or comments from the council? Any from the public? Could I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve Accurtrust Fund Fiscal Year 2019 Grant Awards.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good. And Joe, thank you and your board. Are there any Accurboard folks here?
The liaison is here, and that's the only one I see, but very good board.
Okay, great.
Very active meetings.
Well done, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item is approval of city contract. Go ahead, Maureen.
Approval of city contract with Al Holler and Associates for one year of tax audit services.
Hello, Lars, how are you?
Hi, good.
Looking sharp today.
Thank you. Mayor Protem and council, I'm Lars Johnson, Budget and Tax Manager. As Maureen read, this is a proposal to use an outside audit firm to do our sales tax auditing for a period of one year. Our in-house auditor retired June 1st, and we think this would be a great alternative to doing this function in-house. So this function is we're able to, as a local jurisdiction, perform audits on local businesses to ensure that they're filing and paying sales tax liability as they should. So Al Holler is a very reputable firm. There's himself, and I think he has three other CPAs or employees working for him. He's had the firm since 1992. The city's worked with him in the past in 2014, just on a per-audit basis. Some of his larger clients are Queen Creek, Morana, Glendale, Buckeye, El Mirage, Paradise Valley. So he's, it's a very well-known firm and a good model, I guess, that he's established to help municipalities in their audit function. With that, we're proposing not to do away with that position that is vacated. Instead, we'd move that to a more customer service approach, where we'd be more proactive rather than reactive. We would, through our business license program, for example, when a new business applies, sets up their business, that person could reach out to that new business and make sure they understand what their sales tax liability is, if they had any questions on it, and then follow-up for a period of time, make sure they begin reporting. That's one example. Other ways are just through monitoring building permits, making sure contractors are filing, spec builds, property records to find leases and rentals, trying to catch these upfront, notifying people, hey, you know, you should be paying sales tax, or did you know that this transaction will cause you to have a tax liability? And work with them rather than, you know, that's the goal upfront, rather than in rears, trying to assess people. So that's the approach.
Thank you, Lars. Thank you. Any comments? Go ahead.
Lars, first of all, I think having outside auditors periodically is a solid business management decision. I've used outside auditors before, and rotating them every couple of years usually is also a good idea. My question here is if we had an internal auditor that still stays on staff, and we're going to go outside at this time, that is an additional cost to the city. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's right. It would be an additional cost, a service level increase, per se, to our sales tax function.
Is the intention to continue this, or is this a kind of a one-time benchmark way of comparing audit conclusions?
My feeling, as maybe Mark can add, is that we would try this for a year, see how well his results are. And he's told me upfront that he's very transparent in his relations with the city so that if he feels like, you know, he's done his work, he feels that the city's, you know, in the areas he's working, getting the sales tax they need, then he'll let us know and not necessarily renew that contract. So I think we'll take it a year at a time, but I'll let Mark add if he has anything.
Thanks, Lars. Just to clarify, this is the auditing of our local businesses for sales tax compliance. As Lars said, we have used Al Holler in the past when we had a timeframe between auditors. We had a gap in our, not internal, but our sales tax auditor that was employed here. The complexity that has been added to the audit process with the centralization of tax administration at Department of Revenue makes it almost impossible for a government the size of Prescott to audit any business other than people that only have a business location within the city. So we can audit, say, Lamerson's Jewelry, but we can't audit Cal Ranch, who has branches across different cities here. Because with the centralization, you either have to have the state do it, which is hard to get them to do anything, or you have to audit all their branches by yourself, which you can't do with one auditor. This approach, as Lars did mention, there is some level of additional cost here. The position, of course, being downgraded from a sales tax auditor to a tax specialist, it is not going to cost as much. And with the addition of this outside auditor that can focus on areas that we're having compliance issues, will definitely bring in additional sales tax revenue, which our experience with this auditor and our audit function in whole is it brings in well over the cost of it, and it increases beyond the direct revenues from those audits. It also increases compliance across that whole sector. You start auditing jewelry stores, and then all of a sudden, all the jewelry stores hear about it, and they're a lot more diligent at complying or contracting.
I think you've answered my next question, which would be your expectation that we're probably going to recover this cost, if not even get a net increase in tax revenue with that type of experience and expertise.
Yeah, definitely.
Don't guarantee anything, but what's their average rate of return?
Probably see a three times recovery of the cost, direct. And as I said, you know, I've done audits for the city, you know, years and years ago. Beyond that direct revenue, you have increased revenues just from compliance, because it's a small town. People know when this person's audited, and they might be a little more diligent about making sure that they comply or call us and help us, help them comply. So we see increased revenue all over, not just in those direct revenues. But direct revenue should be about three times.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Question, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mark, we've been doing this money shuffle with the state now for a year. What are they charging us to manage our money?
Well, it's not really just related to the sales tax. I think it was, yeah, it's for all the state shared revenues and transactions, about $100,000, I think $112,000 or something this year.
So I still have real heartburn, Mr. Palladini, about us being a chartered city and us having the people in this chartered community allow us to tax ourself 1% and 2%, and then have to take that money that we agreed to and send it down to Phoenix, including bed tax money, including the business tax license money that I just paid. And to wait for a month in the rears to get that money back and not have any credibility whether we're getting the right amount back, and the level of phone calls that if I have an issue with paying my sales tax, knowing how I could get help in the past with the city, and how now when I call the state I get no help, I would like to ask the city attorney if we can go back and file a lawsuit against the state of Arizona to get our right for our sales tax collections back.
Well, happy to answer the question. You know, the current case law will, it would indicate that that type of lawsuit wouldn't be successful. The power of the city to implement a transaction privilege tax is under state law. In other words, it's not inherent in the charter. So, and there's a whole model city tax code we're obligated to adopt with various local changes to it. But really, what's left for charter cities, as a rule, are real estate transactions and local elections. And even local elections are being threatened in terms of when we are required to have them and when not, as you know by the, this bill that is taking effect in August. So I understand your frustration, but the sort of, the rule of law out there in current cases is that taxing is a police power. Police powers can be restricted, even in charter cities, by state government.
Okay. Because I have not been very happy with our sales tax system now. And just as an example, I paid two months at one time and put it all in one check, and they sent me back and said I overpaid because they weren't sharp enough to understand I paid for two months. So, and then sent me back a notice of penalty. So all those things floating back and forth across the mail, it's easy to understand if we were doing it the old way, I wouldn't have that issue. So I wish you guys would come back.
Mr. Palladini, has that TPT been challenged by other charter cities? When you're referencing case law?
The centralization? You talking about the centralization, the, no, it has not directly, to my knowledge. But again, I could tell you that a, that type of law, I think the reason why is because that type lawsuit would not be successful. Because the, what we're referred to as the program cities, the cities that handled their own collection and auditing of TPT, essentially that, you know, that was, that was authorized by state law and by the state legislature, so subsequently it was taken away by the, by state law and the state legislature. So unfortunately, it's not a, the solution to the problem isn't through the justice system, it's through the political process. And, you know, I won't comment on, but it is as part of the legislative process and not part of the judicial process, the correction to it.
Is there a weakness in our city charter that doesn't specifically reference TPT or sales tax types of collections?
It talks, it limit, it creates a limit for the city as to how much the, it authorized a 1% sales tax and anything beyond that had to be approved by the voter. So the charter didn't grant the city to, the power to tax. It essentially limited the city in its power to tax.
Based upon the elections occurring and giving the city the authority to tax up to that level?
To go, yeah, to go above the 1%, the charter says that it has to be approved by the voter. So that's why the street tax was approved by the voters, and then the PSPRS tax was approved by the voters. And prior to that, the street slash open space tax was approved by the voters. So anything above 1% has to have voter approval. So it's, our charter, the state law authorized cities to charge a sales tax or a TPT. And then, you know, a long time ago, and then the state law created this model tax code, which said if you're going to charge TPT, here's the model tax code you need to adopt. And then there are these, anytime you want to do something that's unique from the model city tax code, you have to go through the state. There's an approval process. And then our charter said, okay, city has the authority or the power to tax, but only to 1%. Everything above that, the city, the city council's authority is limited. Only the voters can raise the tax, unlike our neighbors to the east that, well, I guess they've changed their city code, but since they've raised their tax.
Understood. But since the state took back the TPT tax enforcement, there hasn't been a charter city challenging that authority?
To my knowledge, there hasn't been any, I'm not aware, and so I don't believe, I would, I believe I would be aware if a city, one or more cities had attempted to file a lawsuit to challenge that law.
So there might be a chance.
Well, like I said, I think that the reason why there haven't been any challenges because there are, how many program cities, 16?
It was 15 at the time.
And not all of them were charter cities. I believe that, so, again, it wasn't a charter city issue, it was a local decision issue, but.
Would it hurt anything to ask?
Well, just, if I could, just put in here, the cities that did do their own collection were a lot more involved in it than we are. City of Scottsdale, city of Phoenix, city of Tucson. I think if there was any ability to sue those relatively large cities who had hundreds of people in their tax divisions that helped customers and enforced their tax code, probably would have done it four years ago when this all happened.
And again, I would say that, you know, there is, there's a, there's the old adage, you know, anybody can sue anybody else over anything, but there's also sort of the wise use of your, of your legal staff. And, and these cases are complicated, you know, do you want to hire outside lawyers to help, expert witnesses, strain the judicial system here and through the appellate, because you'd have to go through the appellate courts and probably to the Supreme Court, the Arizona Supreme Court, to get any kind of relief. And it's a long, long, long process. And, you know, my recommendation in those kinds of situations, when it's a foregone conclusion, it's, it really isn't worth, isn't worth going through the process. Because, because you know what the end result's going to be, based on case history.
I've seen case law showing that charter cities do have a certain amount of autonomy, and state law has challenged that autonomy, and charter cities have prevailed.
And where charter cities have prevailed primarily is when it comes to local elections. But even, again, even then, where the state legislature and the governor are chipping away at that, or trying to chip away at that, you know, and we see, you know, where they've been successful is this recent bill last year about elections in an even-numbered, fall of the even-numbered year if you don't meet a certain threshold relative to the governor's election. Another bill which failed or didn't go through was the, essentially making all local elections partisan. You know, that didn't, that didn't even have enough support in the legislature. So it's a constant battle every, every winter through spring on trying to sort of play defense against the state legislature. And, and it really is a, it is a, it is a, the solution is political, small P, political. It's through the legislative system to try and change the legislature's hearts and minds as to why local government, particularly charter cities, should have more autonomy. But where we've been successful in challenging state reaching into local government is elections. Remember also, last year, the legislature was pushing to limit how cities could sell property to developers, you know, and, and that bill, there's some complexity to it. But that bill also didn't make it through the both houses of legislature. That was another attempt to sort of, for the state to inject itself in really a fundamental function of city government. function of city government is selling its property, its real estate if it chooses to. So, fortunately, that one didn't go through, but we would have been prepared to fight that one because it would have created, could have created a lot of roadblocks to economic development.
Thank you. Councilman Good, Councilman Lamerson's been waiting, in fact, he was in front of you, but go ahead, Jim, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And, you know, I kind of feel bad that the older fellow sitting next to me, he's got usurped there, but if you need some more time, I'm more than happy to acquiesce.
It just comes down to a cost benefit analysis, I think, when it comes to a legal challenge like that, and it doesn't justify it.
And I agree with that, and it's very frustrating to hear one of our highly respected legal minds throwing their hands up saying it just doesn't pay to go through the effort of what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. I mean, that's part of the problem in the country nationally today. We just, all just kind of roll over. One of the things that kind of pesters me a little bit is the costs related to delivering basic services in the city applies to everybody equally, but we don't enforce it on everybody equally. We, we, and you know, Lars, I'm not here to string you up, you're just the messenger. But you know, I harped on this before, and I was told we just don't have the resources to impose what's good for one, isn't really good for everybody, because anybody with brick and mortar, we're going after them. But all of these black market retailers, all of these black market, I don't know, restaurateurs, you name it, we're going to go after the guys that got the brick and mortar, but we're not going to go after the other guys. We're only going to go after the guys we can. And that just, I find it very offensive. This community has thousands of businesses, but we don't approach collecting the applicable taxes to provide basic services equally. We only go after the ones we can touch. You know what I'm saying? And when you have people peddling, whether it's Mexican food or jewelry, and they're not collecting the same applicable taxes as necessary to do that while they're feeding off the city of Prescott, I have a real problem with it. So, I guess the problem I have is how much money do you estimate the city is losing with regards to providing basic services because we don't go out and collect taxes equally?
That's an interesting question, and if I knew that, I would go after it. That's, if I knew where they were, if I, if I could audit, they would be reporting, or legal would help shut them down. So, we do a lot of work. There is, just like you mentioned, there's a certain level of the cost to get compliance versus how much money it brings in. You've got to, you know, weigh that with limited resources, unfortunately.
And I appreciate that, and I know, you know, Mr. Blair suffers the same aggravations as I do with the people that are black marketing blinds, you know. In a community the size of Prescott, I don't think it's as difficult as if you were in Phoenix, but I do know that we have some issues here. And I'm not quite sure whether it's, we need to spend our money more judiciously on employees and where we put those employees, and how we treat the taxpayers equally rather than targeted groups.
And I could just add, to echo what Lars said, that legal and finance working in conjunction have, you know, where people are failing to pay their transaction privilege tax, we have gone after them, and when they continue to fail to pay and refuse to pay, we've gotten a judicial order shutting the business down because they're not following the rules. So, you know, when we find out about those, we, we take a fairly aggressive position, particularly if somebody has been doing it, you know, for quite some time. So, but I think what Lars' point is, should be well taken, is that, you know, if you're, if you're sort of in the black market and doing it out of sight, and we don't know about it, then, you know, once we find out about it though, we will investigate it and, and we will go after that, that business, and make every effort to not only collect going forward, but to collect if we can determine what any back, you know, back sales taxes we're obligated to pay.
And definitely.
You know, you can't have it both ways. You can't, you know, you can't sit there and say, you know, it's, everybody should be treated the same, and every, every business who's, who's, you know, doing a taxable transaction, the city should be taxed the same. And then, when we, when we have to use our resources and get court orders and things to make them pay or, or shut down, that's, that's treating everybody equal, you know? I mean, so, it, it's not, we're not trying to be bad guys, but we're, you know, government is here to be, to treat everybody the same, and you either, if you don't pay the tax, then you don't get the privilege of doing the transaction.
Thank you.
Well, and just to clarify, there is, I mean, we do, everybody we know that's doing business here, we approach and we get them licensed. So, if there's somebody that isn't being licensed, you know, we need to let, somebody needs to let us know, and we'll be glad to follow up on that. Every event on the square, we're down there, we talk to every vendor, we make sure they're all licensed. You know, we, we canvass the neighborhoods and walk, walk the streets to make sure all those businesses are licensed and get them information. So, if you know of people that aren't licensed, please get this information, we'll be glad to follow up on it.
I appreciate that comment, Mark. What I would like to ask Lars is, since our last conversation, which was approximately a year ago on the same topic, how many people have you approached and how many people have we acknowledged we're doing business in Prescott and not doing what they're legally compelled to do, along with the other people that are legally compelled to do it?
I don't have the statistics, but it has been, a business license has enabled us to, to touch and reach out to a lot of folks we hadn't in the past. And there were some that did not have a tax license and were not paying. So, when we have the opportunity to process that application, we inform them of their tax liability, get them licensed also with the state.
Would it be a fair, fair estimation to acknowledge the fact that while they weren't legally doing business in the city, they were using all of the amenities that the city provides, so they were actually stealing from those that are paying for those services?
Yeah, it is, it is illegal to operate and make sales that are taxable and not remit the tax. So, so this is the, with this contract, I think will be a leg up, and like Mark said, it's going to by far cover its costs and return more in one-time audit revenue, but also ongoing revenue.
Thank you, Lars. Any other comments from council? Could I have a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to approve city contract number 2019-040.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. Thank you, Lars and Mark. Item C?
Award city contract to Brown and Caldwell for design and engineering services for the Zone 41 Mingus Pump Station Tank and Pipeline Project.
Hello, Eric. It's good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protem, Council, Eric Bay Public Works. This item is for the design contract for the Zone 41 Pump Station Tanks and Pipeline Project. Zone 41, for those of you who don't know, it's generally north of YPIT and east of Willow Creek Road, kind of in the Prescott Heights area. So, this is a well-needed project. The booster station there is aged, and this will upgrade it to deliver the required pumping capacities. The two tanks on top of the Mingus Hill there, they're also aged and will be upsized to provide fire flow volumes. And also with the project, we'll be updating some drainage and some piping to go with it. We've received three statements of qualifications. We reviewed them, we selected Brown and Caldwell as the most responsive consultants. We're happy with the selection, they've worked quite a bit in the city in the past, they're familiar with our codes and standards, they'll be able to deliver us a good product. We've negotiated with the consultant, we've come up with a good price, we have funding available on the water fund, and we are recommending award at this time. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have about the project.
Any questions or comments from council? Could I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to award city contract number 2018-219 to Brown and Caldwell.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Very good. Now, we go into item D, and so we will have the public hearing. Go ahead, Maureen.
Item D is a public hearing for the FY 19 Budget Expenditure Limitation and Tax Levis, and then at a special meeting will be the adoption of resolution number 2018-1648, adopting the final FY 2019 Budget Expenditure Limitation and City Job Roster.
So, Maureen, do we have any comments from the public on this?
Yes, they can comment.
Okay. But has anyone submitted a form?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Sure. Go right ahead. Mark, sorry to see you there. No, you don't have to be quick. We've taken nine months to get to this, you don't need to be quick.
Don't have to tell me, it's every year. Mark Woodfall, Finance Director, again. Just a real quick recap, had a lot of meetings, as Mayor Protem pointed out, to get to this point. Today, we have a public hearing on three things. It's one public hearing, but it covers all three of these, our budget for FY 19, it covers the property tax levy, and it covers the setting of the alternative expenditure limitation. As you mentioned afterwards, we'll have a special meeting for council to consider the actual resolution that passes those. And then, on the 24th, we'll be back again, because state law will not allow us to adopt a tax levy until two weeks after the adoption of the budget, so that'll be on the 24th. Just a real quick recap, this is our budget summary, which we've seen a couple times, won't spend a lot of time, except to point out the definite, the PSPRS tax is coming in as expected, it's been looking real good, and we've been passing that on to PSPRS, and we're anxious to get our actuarials in six months. Again, this resolution, 1648, will adopt the budget state forms that sets the budget at fund and department level. It'll establish the alternative home rule at $191,270,765 for fiscal year 19, and it'll set the job roster. And we went ahead and put the last four years employee counts there just kind of as a reference. We went over that, of course, in detail at the budget workshop, and it's all available on the website for those who didn't make it. And since it is also the property tax public hearing, we thought we'd bring back the Old Faithful Chart that shows our comparison of property tax. City property tax went down this year to .2699. Again, we only have a primary tax because the secondary bonds that were for the lake purchase paid off two years ago. So, each year that does go down. This is the second year in a row the city has not taken advantage of the 2% increase in our levy that is allowed by state law, because sales tax revenues are coming in so well and other revenues are there, so we don't need to increase that tax burden on the citizens. That capacity does stay there. If something were to happen in the future, council could increase it for those amounts that we did not. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilman Good?
I just want to make sure the public understands that we've had a number of meetings and discussions on this budget, and we've asked a lot of questions and analyzed a lot of things. So, it's not like we're just adopting $191 million without comment. Being able to reduce the tax rate, get our bond obligations paid off, I think most of the public understands that we're doing a much more effective and robust job of designing, engineering, and building a lot of the public works that haven't been completed for a number of years. Everybody says, when are we going to get this done? And now that we've had so many projects being worked on, people are complaining that there's too much work being done. So, sometimes you get criticized for one thing when, when we get, we're getting the projects done. So, I think when we've been able to hold our staffing levels essentially even, our budget is going up less than 1%, and we're getting a lot more completed. We've got a lot to be, be proud about in this budget, and I appreciate your work, Mark, on it, and I think we've got a solid budget going forward for this fiscal year.
Thank you. Councilman Shiska?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could you explain a little more to the few folks that are out there about what all this means and how the $53 relates to the $500 and some odd dollars?
Sure, Councilman, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to go too fast. We always compare our property tax rate on a $200,000 home based on history, yeah, I guess. The median home price in town, when you put it all together, is close to 200,000. I mean, obviously, it's a huge range. $200,000 home in fiscal year 19 will pay $53, $54 in tax with this.
And that's to the city of Prescott.
To the city, they'll also pay other taxes. If they lived across the street in some of our areas where they'd be in a fire district, they'd pay $500 more a year just for that same municipal service of fire, fire protection. So, that is a great value we're able to give our citizens, that the citizens in the county, of course, aren't in the city, so they pay that extra fee, and even citizens in other municipalities that have sales taxes higher than ours and state shirt revenues higher than ours, still have this large property tax for fire districts.
Well, thank you for pointing that out.
Good. Any other comments? Does anyone have a motion to move to close the public hearing?
Mayor Protem, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please vote.
Passes 6-0.
Thank you. So, now we need to go back into the regular meeting?
You'll need to recess the regular meeting and then convene into the special meeting.
Okay, so we will now recess?
Correct.
The regular meeting, and we will go into?
The special meeting.
The special meeting. So, now we'll call to order the special meeting, and we have to do roll call again, right? Did anybody leave? No? I think some wanted, no? Go ahead, Maureen.
Out here, raise your hand.
Exactly.
The only one that's missing is Mayor Mangarelli, and he is excused.
Okay, very good. So, now we're in the regular agenda to adopt resolution for the budget.
Do you want me to go ahead and read that first?
Please.
Okay. Adopt resolution number 2018-1648 of the mayor and council of the city of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, determining and adopting final estimates of proposed expenditures for fiscal year 2019, declaring that the same shall constitute the budget for the city of Prescott for said fiscal year establishing the expenditure limitation and approving and updating the job roster for the city of Prescott.
Any other comments from the council? Could I have a motion?
Mayor Protem, I move to adopt resolution number 2018-1648.
Second.
Please vote.
It passes 6-0.
And I just want to say, thank you, Mark, and Lars, and all of you for, and really all of the departments, because everyone's worked really hard on this budget. And Michael Lamar, thank you, I really appreciate it. So, now we need to adjourn the special meeting, meeting adjourned, and now we go back into the regular voting meeting, right? So, I think, that's what it says.
Correct.
Okay. Do we need to roll call or anything again?
Nope.
Okay, so now we just need to adjourn.
Correct.
Very confusing. Welcome to government. No. And speaking of that, you know, Mayor Mangarelli, we miss you, I know you're having fun wherever you are, and just want to say, Councilman Blair, I listened to your radio show this morning, and I liked the comment that the best government is the government's closest to the people. And I hope people feel in the city of Prescott that we're the best government that they have. And in closing, like Mayor Mangarelli always does with a quote, my quote is from Ronald Reagan, and it says, "Government's first duty is to protect the people, not to run their lives." Amen, right?
Amen.
Very good. We're adjourned, thank you very much.